All right, it is 6:31. So with that, is there a motion to open the meeting?
I'm moved.
Is there a second? Great. Vote electronically, Victoria?
Yes, please.
I'm not in yet, Victoria, but I'm yes, please.
Okay, that's six yes, and I don't see your goes yet.
Great, great. Meeting is open. So with that, please join me and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Wait.
And Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States of America and to the public.
And with that, we're moving into public input number one. Jeff, what I thought is if you wanted to give an update as to having faculty and staff back in the building and any changes to our opening on Monday, and then we would open it up for any public comment regarding that.
Sure. So the last several weeks, we've been planning for a successful, safe reopening of schools. So the building administrators, up until this last week, were working primarily with each other to organize things. And then this past week, beginning on Tuesday, the teachers arrived. I'm gonna let Mr. Malone talk a little bit in a second about some of the stuff that his faculty has been doing. And I'll do the same with Ms. Carrier. But from my perspective, a big part of the preparations and in terms of refining instructional delivery and how it's changed, and essentially, it's really changed upside down because teachers are not supposed to really be in close proximity to students. So that really changes the nature of what happens in the classroom. But again, getting back to what I originally said, there's a lot of preparation for logistical concerns that normally we would not be concerned with. Well, all week this week, teachers have been checking in, not only with the questionnaire that students will be expected to complete with their parents every morning, or the parents will complete. But temperatures are checked every day for every person who enters the school. And if someone has a temperature that registers above 100 degrees, they have to have their temperature checked the second time manually by the school nurse. At the middle school, high school, we've been busy taking the hallways, so there are lanes of traffic. And in fact, tomorrow, there'll be a pretty detailed video that will go out to all six through 12 families addressing what a day will look like for their child when they arrive on Monday, from entering the parking lot, to entering the building, to transition times, to lunch, to dismissal. Our goal being that when students arrive to school at the middle school, high school, their day is pretty much planned out. And I know that Ms. Carrier has had a couple of orientations for new students. And I didn't speak much about the elementary school, but I was down there the other day. And I know Mr. Malone's been working very hard with his faculty on many of the same issues. But why don't I turn it over to you, Mr. Malone, just to talk a little bit about the preparations, not only instructionally, but logistically.
Sure. Thanks, Mr. Nichols. Good evening, everyone. This, this week's been actually a tremendous support for us at the school to have the staff here and, you know, have the time to prepare for the student's arrival on Monday, the 14th. Before I get into detail, it's important to just publicly express the gratitude that I have. And I know everyone agrees that this, the faculty down here, and I'm sure Jeff and Brittany speak about the faculty up at Pierce, and everybody's rolled up their sleeves and they're taking care of business. We've, I mean, down here, we've basically had to rearrange the entire building. And everybody's making it happen. We're creating wonderful learning environments that will support the children and also make sure that we adhere to the restrictions that, that we're working under and providing those, you know, the safe environment for everyone's return. So I really do just applaud everyone. In addition to, to all the, the work in rearranging and shuffling and moving things around, the faculty's also paid particular attention, attention to looking at our curriculum maps, curriculum guides, or sometimes referred to as the scope and sequences for the school year, in the main subject areas, as well as our, our special area. Teachers are doing the same with an understanding that the children are coming off of spring where some of the curricular areas may not have been covered to the level that we all expect. And also, understanding that the, the way we're going to be spending time during the school day will be a little bit different, especially this fall. So we wanted to make some thoughtful adjustments to the scope and sequences so that the expectations are where they should be and will allow us to have a smooth opening and most importantly, allow the children to feel success and, and comfort as they return. And lastly, we've been taking a close look at the Google classrooms being set up by the teachers. Let's say, developing the, the infrastructure for potential further remote learning. If, if, if it's something that we have to pivot towards, the classrooms are all set up. And we're going to start on Monday, the 14th, by introducing all the children to Google Classroom and hopefully also introducing the parents to that a little bit more, so that in the event we have to make a switch, we're going to be well prepared.
Thanks, Mr. Malone. Brittany, do you want to, Ms. Carrier, or do you want to add anything in terms of some of the meetings you've been having with middle school, high school faculty this week?
Yeah. So again, to Mr. Malone's sentiment, our teachers and staff and custodial, from down to the custodial staff, to our cafeteria staff, all the way up to our teachers, have been tremendous in being so flexible and almost an excitement in the building because we get to see the kids again, even if it's a little bit different. We've been working on, again, like Mr. Malone said, we worked in departments to do our scope and sequence to, to figure out any gaps that might have happened from the spring, so that we could have that vertical alignment. Our, our webcams have been installed, thanks to Scott Fisher and his team. I want to give a big shout out to Vinny because he's been working his butt off in our building to put them up. And to this morning, they did a thorough, in-person, socially-distanced webcam training while it was also being virtually streamed, which actually was kind of like the practice of what our live bell schedule will go like. And that really was helpful for our teachers and staff. Google Classroom has been, been sharing as well to make sure that all of those links are up and different like hints and tips have been being shared within our staff. And then the practice with delivery has been a huge help because our teachers are rotating into different rooms. There's different setups and different technology mishaps that might be happening that we're trying to iron out all of those. And the teachers have been practicing with one another on different Google meets, and I think that has been the most tremendous in-person like PD that's been happening. So I think that hopefully, fingers crossed, next week, we will try to be as smooth as possible. And then our grade teams have been working on that social, emotional aspect of how we're checking in. And we're going to be implementing through the great work of Mr. Guinan, twice a week check-in that our students have to do with a form, and then that will be going to our guidance staff, which we've been meeting with, on what supports we can be doing for our children there. And then, as Mr. Nichols said, Ms. Westhoff did an amazing video that you will see net tomorrow, where she goes through the exact procedures throughout the entire school day, thanks to our teacher actors for that as well. And then our scanners are up, our hallways are lined, we're ready to go for the changing as we have 160 students that are going to be transitioning in the high school during that hybrid model.
Great. Thanks, Ms. Carrier. So I'm gonna hold off, Brian, on the rest of the superintendent's report until after public input. Would that be your preference?
Yeah, I think that's fine, with it not being germane to the opening. And at this point, we would ask if anybody from the public who is attending this evening, I see we have 31 attendees, has any questions or comments that they would like to make now under public input number one. So if you could just raise your hand in the chat room or put a comment into the chat room, and we will be able to address that. Scott, do we see?
I'm not seeing any hands raised, Brian.
Okay, and I don't see anything in the chat room. So with that, let's move on to the remainder of the superintendent's report. Jeff?
Brian, if board members have questions, do you want them to wait to the end of the superintendent's update?
Yeah, I think that would just make sense in terms of, if you ask questions about anything. Unless you have something now, by all means, please ask.
I'll wait to the end. It has to do with this, but I can wait to the end.
It also looks like someone raised their hand.
Did someone raise their hand?
Yeah, Mitchell Brownstein.
Okay.
Oh, wait, now it went away.
It went away.
So let's finish the report, and then we'll have board questions. And then if anyone from the public raises their hand, we can address it then.
So I guess the, the rest of my report does pertain to reopening, as it seems like everything does at this point. The governor came down with some guidance about a week ago that really, as has been the case several times over the last few months, sort of surprised everybody in that he talked about creating a dashboard for COVID-19 data in schools. And basically, that directive was announced without, without a lot of detail. He stated that there would be some communication coming directly from the Department of Health shortly after his announcement, and that memorandum never came. We've since received guidance from, from other entities that have stated that schools are in fact not responsible for conducting testing, but we are responsible. And we began yesterday afternoon posting essentially a dashboard on our website. There are some conflicting, there is conflicting guidance out there about what we're supposed to post, but the latest guidance from the Suffolk County Department of Health is that we continue to only post positive tests that are reported by the Suffolk County Department of Health. So if in fact, we receive word, we being the school district, that someone has tested positive, we are not supposed to post that to the website, which ultimately is, is also information that goes back to the Suffolk County Department of Health, until it is verified and we're informed that it, that is indeed a positive case by the Suffolk County Department of Health. So I just talked a lot, but basically, the takeaway is that we will be hosting this website, that we are still relying on information to post to that website from the Suffolk County Department of Health, when initially, a lot of districts were worried that the school district was supposed to take a lead in gathering that information. That is not the case. Secondly, the temperature, the infrared scanner seemed to be operating very well at both buildings. The questionnaire, people are filling it out. We had, we had planned to use a company that unfortunately is used by many other districts on Long Island. And we found out that, that program crashed on a pretty regular basis this last week. So Mr. Fisher is in the process of looking for other options to take the, the questionnaire data and, and I guess process it in a way that is useful to our district. And Mr. Fisher, if you're on the line, you could probably provide a more concise summary than I just did.
Yeah, no, you were, you were spot on there. Unfortunately, the districts that, that did go with, with this particular product, they have not been able to, 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 you know, get it working properly. So we are looking at another alternative that hopefully will be able to have us do everything we need to. In the meantime, we do have a backup plan, which we've been using with the staff, as you know, which is a simple Google form, although it's not as sophisticated as some of these other products. It is getting us the information that we're required to have, and we can sort through the backend spreadsheet that results from it. So until we get a new product in place and up and running, which I'm expecting to be very soon, we will continue to go that route.
Thanks. And I just have two additional updates. Number one, we continue to interview and hire staff. And I would state to the Board of Education and to the community, the pandemic has created unusual staffing requirements that necessitate hiring all the way up until the start of school. So in a typical hiring season, we would be done with this by early August. But when you essentially take 50 classrooms of 20 students, and even with a 15% reduction in enrollment, let's say for argument's sake, you, those, those, those 20 students become, you know, 16 students roughly, and you divide them into two groups of eight or, or something like that, you're essentially almost doubling your staff. So how you fulfill that need, you can do it either through hiring additional teachers or hiring additional TAs to fill the, the needed supervision and instructional requirements. But regardless of the choice you make, it's a net increase in the number of staff working with the students. And, and hiring staff, when everybody's looking to do so at the same time, is a challenge. So it's not unusual for the district to make an offer for a one-year appointment and then to have that person accept the position. And then because the district they're coming from makes a counteroffer that they find more attractive, that candidate resigns, and then we're back to square one. So that's happened multiple times. You'll see some of those scenarios addressed on tonight's board agenda. And I just want you to know that, from my perspective, this is entirely pandemic-related. And we just have to keep moving forward and doing the best we can to staff the building appropriately. And I think that we will open school on Monday with students coming with the, with enough staff to do the job well. And then lastly, there was some discussion at the last Board of Education meeting regarding athletics. And I had stated that it was somewhat of a fluid situation. My understanding is that there was a meeting today. And the discussion at that meeting, at Section 11, I was not involved in the discussion, addressed the possibility of that September 21 date being moved. And hopefully, we'll get some clarity from, you know, the responsible entities in the next day or two so we can communicate that to our community. So that's an update with regard to everything that's going on, or at least that which I can cover in five to 10 minutes.
Great. Thanks, Jeff. With that, I would open it up to board questions now for Jeff or the administration, and then we'll turn back to the public before we move on. Are there any board questions?
I have a couple. First of all, thank you very much. That was a really great update. And I, and I want to echo your applause to the faculty and all the staff getting ready. This is the most challenging of times, and I know everyone's been working really hard. And I've heard a lot of thank yous from so many parents in the past few weeks about all the hard work everyone's doing and about the reopening of the school and the options that we've delivered. So everybody should feel really, really good about all their work. Just a couple of questions that I think might be helpful to, to walk the answers through. Can you just review again, kind of the protocol for buses? I know that, you know, there's a limited amount of kids that may be on the bus, but just kind of what that will look like for the student and are there monitors? Making sure there's social distancing or what that looks like? If there's any change in the enrollment number, I, if you had said that tonight, I apologize. But any change in the expected enrollment from the last meeting we had? And then the last thing was just any update to the Sag Harbor Learning Center opening, since it's been years in the making. So those are my three questions. Thanks.
So with regard to buses, early on, going back about four to six weeks ago, we looked at the possibility of keeping students six feet apart on the buses, which is the guidance. And I communicated with multiple superintendents, about 25, and everybody was in the same boat, essentially concluding that that was impossible to do with the number of students that we had to transport. So we are requiring masks on the buses at all times. And we are limiting the number of students to one per seat. So typically, on a bus, two students could sit together. Now it's one. The only people who can sit together are siblings. So if two siblings are riding the bus together, they're permitted to, to sit in the same seat. The transportation staff has been hiring monitors. And where they think it's necessary, they're putting an additional person on the bus. And so the, the numbers that came back suggest that there's not wide participation in utilizing the bus. And I think that, again, as conditions change on the ground, and hopefully, if they change, they change for the better, bus ridership, I anticipate, will change as well. With regard to your second question, enrollment has sort of changed every day. It seems like we're getting between three and 10 new enrollees a day. So we are now up over 100 new resident enrollees. So in other words, over 100 students who reside in the district have registered for school, who did not attend the Sag Harbor schools last year. In addition to that, we had 22 inquiries, grade six through 12, in, in terms of paying tuition. And we've contacted those families and let them know that we are accepting six through 12, and conversely, not accepting pre-K through five new tuition payers. And let me clarify my statement, six through 12, those 22 are, are not existing tuition payers. They are families who reside outside of the district who have expressed interest in paying tuition for the first time this year. And then lastly, the, the update on the Sag Harbor Learning Center. The building is completed, the interior. Teachers have been in there this week, setting up. Our business office has moved down into the area that was intended for their use. Doc, Mr. Fisher has moved into, that's the Director of Technology, into the Learning Center. The last thing, if you've been attending these board meetings, is, was the retaining wall in the back of the building. That has been completed. The fence has been installed on top of the retaining wall, and the asphalt has been patched. The last thing remaining is a skin coat of asphalt that's supposed to go over the back drive. And I just received an email from the contractor stating that they will be doing that on Saturday. So we should be good to go for a Monday opening.
Terrific. And by the way, I drove by there, and on Sunday and Monday of Labor Day weekend, they were finishing that wall. So everybody's been working hard. And then in terms of signage, I know, I think at the next meeting, we're going to get a proposal for long-term signage. Do we have anything temporary that's going to be there for the opening?
Sure. Yeah, we do. Paul Wilkin, our Director of Facility, ordered a banner that's, I think the dimensions he gave me were two feet by seven feet. That's going to be hung up on the front of the school. And then all the interior signage has been posted. So the big, the big missing item is the exterior sign. But we have the big banner that will be up prior to Monday, until we decide on what that interior, exterior sign will be.
Terrific. Thank, well done. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Any other board member questions at this time? Is there anybody from the public who would like to be heard? Please raise your hand. And while you're doing that, I'll look to the chat. I see one comment in there. It says, "Will my son need to hand in the form each morning when he walks in? Where can I find the form to fill out?" referring to the COVID exposure form.
So that, that form is sent out daily to families in the district. So on Sunday evening, each family will receive one of those forms. And then you complete the form, and then you submit it electronically, so you would physically not hand it in. I just want to check with Mr. Fisher, is that form sent out the morning of or the evening prior to the school day?
Usually the morning of, just to keep the dates consistent, so that someone doesn't jump on, you know, the night before at 11 o'clock, it'll throw off the timestamp on the submissions.
So expect it, usually it goes out about 4:00 or 5:00 a.m.?
Correct.
Thank you. Sir Nichols? And Jeff, just to clarify, and maybe McEnroe and his, what about for our parents that can't do it electronically? Just maybe so the public knows. How is, how is that being handled?
I haven't given some thought to that because we all have the, the Google Chromebooks, one for each student. But if, in fact, there's an issue, I would think the, the alternative would be to physically hand that form in when they come to school. Mr. Malone or Mr. Fisher or Ms. Carrier, do you have, have you given that some consideration beyond what I just said?
Yeah. So families that didn't have internet, we've given them hotspots through the hard work of Mr. Fisher and his team, as well as we made sure, because we can't really like mail things home, we wanted to make sure everybody had access to the parent portal, which means they have access to the Google, our Google suite in order to sign in for those logging of the forms. So everything will be on, like their report cards will be through the parent portal, as well as everything will be through their Google suite for their email. So they're all set up.
Mr. Malone, do you want to weigh in?
Yes, I, you know what, I, I actually just wanted to share one thing with the board that I had forgotten to mention, if that's okay.
Please.
In reference to the Learning Center, today, we actually, we were able to hold a kindergarten orientation or meet and greet. So each of the, each of the four kindergarten cohorts came into the new building and along with their parents, we socially distanced in the gym. I was very impressed. All the, all the five-year-olds came in with their masks and did a fabulous job. We had, we had a good discussion. And then the teachers were able to take the children on a little tour of the building. And then everybody met up again on the playground. And it was very well received and a lot of gratitude from the parents. So it's important for everyone to hear that.
Are there any hands up, Mr. Fisher?
Can I just ask a question about the tech, the, the form, regarding that form?
Yeah, absolutely.
Just, Scott, just to clarify, it's going to go out as an email and a text message, right?
Well, the, the system that you were looking at, that we were testing, is probably not what we're going to go with. So I'm not sure ultimately what the, the new one that we get, get up and running will be. But for now, going with the Google form, if we don't have something else, it will just be an email with a link in it.
Got it. So everyone has to remember to look out for their emails the morning before. So that's going to be the key.
Well, actually speaking, I'm sorry, Judd, let me take that back. This, the, the system, if we, even if we're using the Google form, the system that we will use will be the school messenger, and it does have the capability for me to send the message as a text message also. So I'll do both.
Okay. And then, is there any chance we could get like a test of it to the community, like on Sunday or something? Just so people know what to expect?
We, we can do anything, sure.
Or tomorrow, whatever. I, I'm sorry to just put that on you, but I just, I was just thinking about it. There seems to be so many, there seems to be a lot of confusion and questions about it. So maybe just so people.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can set up a trial run or something. Let me, let me discuss that with Mr. Nichols tomorrow, and we'll, we'll figure out how to make something happen along those lines.
Great. Thanks.
Mr. Fisher, I have one more question. Will those texts and emails be going out in Spanish as well?
Yes, because we're using the school messenger system. I, I don't want to speak to the text messages, but certainly the emails automatically get translated when I, if I choose that option. And if the family has indicated in our student information system that their primary household language is Spanish, they will receive the message in Spanish when it's translated. But I, I will have to look at the, the text messaging. I'm not sure if it does that as well with the translation, but definitely the email.
Thank you. And is the form in Spanish for them as well?
No, that's a good question. Um, I will have to figure that out to make, to, to get a form in Spanish. The challenge then is it will have to go out as two separate messages then, with two separate links, or one message that will say, click here in English and click here in Spanish. But I, I will make all of that happen. It will, it will, I'll get it done.
Thanks so much.
Thanks, Scott.
Can I add one thing? Can I just say one thing about text messages coming through at 4:00 in the morning? You're going to get a lot of cranky people, so I would.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't send the text message at 4:00. The email was, the reason that the emails have been going out overnight, just to be clear, is we've had some staff, particularly our custodial staff, who have literally been coming into the building at 3:30, 4:00 in the morning. So I've just been trying to beat them so that we get ahead. But we'll come up with a more reasonable time for everything to go out.
Don't, don't text Sandy that early, Scott. She's not. Okay?
No, I'm not.
We'll not do that.
And so one more question in the chat room and then is there any, I don't see any hands up. So can you further elaborate on who will be receiving Chromebooks and will all grades be using the devices?
Now, why don't, I could answer, but rather than do that, why don't I have Ms. Carrier speak to six through 12 and then Mr. Malone pre-K through five?
Great.
So all students six through 12 will be receiving Chromebooks. We had pickup start on Wednesday from nine to one and then on through Friday of this week, we had two monitors out. If parents couldn't get it, we have set up a time or a drop off for them to get it to them because we understand some of our families work and don't have that time. If they are in person and they still didn't pick it up, they will get it on Monday morning. And then for the other students, we will arrange times with them to make sure that every student gets their Chromebook.
Good. And at the elementary school, the pre-K, K and first grade students will be utilizing iPads. So any, any remote learners at those grade levels, we, we've provided iPads here in our lobby. They can actually pick those up until 8:00 tonight, as well as tomorrow, nine to 12 and Saturday, nine to 12. And that goes as well for second through fifth grade with the Chromebooks. Remote learners can pick those up at those times. And then any in-person students within the building on Monday and into Tuesday will be getting in their iPads at pre-K, K and one and Chromebooks grades two through five.
Great.
I actually have a question about that, if you don't mind. Do you guys strongly, so I guess, obviously there are the Chromebooks and iPads available for every student. For students that have their own machine, is it strongly suggested that they all use the school machine? I was also just curious, I I realized, you know, we have cell phone policies and if someone brings, you know, an Apple laptop as opposed to a Chromebook, they can text during class and stuff. So I just wasn't sure if there's a policy. Is everybody required to use the school laptop? What's, you know, what what's that situation look like?
Oh, I can.
Go ahead, Ms. Carrier.
So I can speak for the middle high school. We are, we are requiring all students for equity purposes because especially in the middle school, they want to know who has the fanciest sneakers or the fanciest clothes. We would like the equity of that. So they're all using Chromebooks. In our AP Computer Science course, there will be MacBooks that they are going to be assigned, but will stay in the actual room for them because they need it for the actual programming purposes. And then if they're remote and they have their own laptop, they can obviously use that. And for the cell phone policy, we discussed and I talked about it with parents as well. It is a very different time now and the kids are in classroom pods, so the cell phones can actually be more supervised than normal. If a child is in distress and really needs to text their parent or talk to their parent, we will allow that this year, obviously. And for students that might need to upload or take a picture, the teachers will work out so that they don't have to always use a student phone to do it. They might use their own phone or an iPad in order to do that. We're going to try to limit the cell phone use, especially in the middle school.
Mr. Malone?
So for students pre-K through five within the building, they would, they would use the devices that we're providing. And Mr. Fisher, correct me if I'm wrong, a remote learner could utilize their own device as long as they go through the Google Chrome browser, correct?
That is correct. They'll be required to log in with their email address and password in order to connect to any of the resources that we're providing, regardless of which device they're using.
Okay.
There is a benefit though to encouraging the families to have them use our devices even when they're home. Because our filtering that's in place on all of our devices when they're in school carries home as well. So if they're using our device when they're home, they will continue to be bound by our filter and security policies. Where if they're using their own device at home, we have no control over that.
Thank you.
I see two more questions in the chat room and then we'll go to the hand raised. Question is, homecoming is, is a September event? Are there any plans?
So as I've said all along, we're going to assess with the opening of school because that's really where our focus needs to be for the next couple of weeks. And at the end of September, we'll determine roughly two weeks into school where we're at. And then we'll determine or discuss which co-curriculars, if any, we can offer. As per my comments at the last Board of Education meeting, I stated that I would have discussions with key co-curricular advisors from last year and have them start to think proactively about what the co-curricular activity that they were previously charged with supervising would look like, should we decide to run something the end of September. So I had some discussions with theater staff and they're actually scheduled to send a survey out to students to start the deliberations about what it would look like. A short answer to the September event, homecoming is that it will not run. So if homecoming typically runs September 21st or 22nd or 23rd, we're not having that this year because I can't knowingly organize an event that runs counter to the guidance that's been issued. And if anybody's participated in homecoming, they know that the majority of that activity does run counter to the guidance. There's a second question. Brian, do you want me to?
You might just go ahead. You make it, you have time, Jeff. You can read it and answer it if you know.
I have instructions to parents regarding mask type and specify, for example, gaiters versus the metal stop, the medical style masks, et cetera. So I'll turn that over to the building principals. I know we had discussions about it. But go ahead. I'll start with Ms. Carrier.
So the guidance that went out today with our welcome back letter was general that the mask needs to be fit over their face and covering entirely and snug. We have not specified that. We've been discussing that if we should because there was no resolution on if we should be X-ing out certain mask types or face coverings.
Mr. Malone?
Correct. Just, just in not having any specific guidance with regards to not being able to wear like the gator as an example, that comes up often. If there is, if there is guidance that we should not allow those, I would of course send that out. But right now we're just encouraging masks and the face coverings to be worn all day.
Thanks. Great. I I see there's one hand, Scott. Can we go to that hand, please?
Sure.
Thanks.
Camille Hoffman?
Hi, Camille. Just give us your phone and you have three minutes.
I I only need, I only need less than one. I'm just wondering when the bus assignments are going to go out. I hadn't seen anything on that yet. And I know in the last meeting you said we, or in the last email, we can expect it in the coming days. I just wasn't sure when they might expect something.
I'm, okay, is Ms. Stevens, are you on the call? I don't believe.
I checked.
Go ahead.
So I can answer a little bit. I checked in with Maude Stevens because of how we're doing busing. She has to manually, manually enter the bus stops into e-school. They, I think she just completed the middle school and high school. However, the timing is a little off, so she needs to fix it due to a glitch in the system because it had to be manual. She's trying to get everything done by the end of the day tomorrow. So it's all updated in the parent portal. So parents can log on and see that.
Great. And if you don't, if you don't hear or don't receive that information by tomorrow afternoon, please reach out to your building principal, either Mr. Malone or Ms. Carrier or myself. And we'll get the answer to you as soon as can, as we can.
All right, great. Are there any other hands? I don't see any other hands. And I don't see any other questions in, excuse me, the chat room. So with that, we will move on to our my, our consent agenda, unless there are any other board questions up until this point. Any more questions? Seeing no board questions, moving on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion with respect to items 8.1 through 8.12?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, please open, and please open the voting, Victoria.
That's unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, going on to section nine of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion with respect to item 9.1 to approve the Shelter Island Union Free School District intermunicipal shared services agreement for transition coordinator and any end or special education?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion or comments or questions from the board? Mr. Nichols, do you want to provide an overview on this or it's pretty self-explanatory?
Well, it's, it's to basically share Shelter Island is paying a portion of a salary of an employee who works in the Sag Harbor School District. And in return for rendering payment, that individual is providing a service for Sag, for Shelter Island, which is basically, I think about one-fifth of his time. But Dr. Mears, if you're on the line, do you want to elaborate?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Good evening. Yeah. So one of the challenges we have is to find transition coordination for post-secondary outcomes for students with disabilities. In other words, what are they going to do after high school? And in according, in accordance with New York State Education Regulation, R200 regulation, we're required to provide that planning for students starting at the age 15. So in an attempt, we had started a regional directors group to talk about shared services. And this is one of our first steps in that direction. And we're able to provide that service, this grant, this position for transition coordination service. If folks may recall, we were able to fund last year with a grant that I wrote through IDEA, section 611. And now we can reduce the reliance on that cost and then provide that service to our neighboring district. And then hopefully that'll build it to a partnership for work-based learning experiences for students with disabilities.
I I think it's wonderful. I I think any shared services, you know, the board is always in support of because it it share, provides better services to neighboring districts and it saves the school and taxpayers money. So I think, great. Are there any other board questions or comments on that? And if not, I'll ask Victoria to open up the voting. Victoria, please.
That's unanimous. Thank you.
Is there a motion for item 9.2?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments from the board or Jeff before we open the voting?
I have one question and one request. My question was simply that the other party signed in April. So what was the delay in getting this done? And then secondly, because it was created then, it lists the board president for signature as Jordana. And I I emailed these earlier, just so that he knows, that shouldn't that be corrected to the current board president for signature?
I'll, I'll let Jeff weigh in on the timing, but in terms of the signature, Jordana would sign that. As I've recused myself on this matter throughout, so to be consistent.
Okay, got it. So then it would read, then it would be, let's see, hold on. Then it should say vice president because it lists her as president because at the time the document was created, she was the president. So then I would recommend it be corrected to be accurate.
I can cross out the title when I'm signing and put the correct title down.
Thanks.
Jeff, in terms of timing?
Yeah, the, you know, it came on sort of, I think this was signed in April when I was not the superintendent. But the communication I had all along with council pertains to, as it related to the wall, pertained to communication between our council and the attorneys for both parties. And my understanding was that this was done. So it was an oversight that it was done, but not presented to the board for review. I just assumed that it already been, it already happened.
Thank you.
Dorian?
That is 6I and Brian DeSessa abstained.
Is there a motion for item 9.3?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Board discussion or a brief overview from Mr. Nichols?
So we, with the increase in enrollment, we've had an increased need to check residency. So residency has been an issue in Sag Harbor for a number of years. And there's a policy and we've approached it in terms of checking in different ways. Sometimes we've used district employees to do residency checks. But my experience is that it's been somewhat inconsistent. So I talked to council, our attorneys about a month ago and said that I would like to systematize our practices and hire someone not local, someone who doesn't have affiliations with the local community who can come in and objectively do the job. And so our attorneys recommended what appears before you this evening. And our tentative plan is to start as follows. Have this person with the 100 new registrants, have the person basically knock on their door at a specified time, not to be publicly disseminated. And if the person is at the residence, which they claim is their domicile, then the investigation stops there and a box is checked. If, when the the firm that we're hiring to do this shows up at a house and no one does answer, then they might try one more time and then it triggers surveillance to determine whether or not, in fact, the family actually resides in the house they claim they live within. This is not unfamiliar to what other districts do. Other districts may in fact do those home checks periodically at specific grade levels. So they might do it at kindergarten, grade six and grade nine. We're going to start with 100, the 100 new registrants, but we can always expand the way we do our checks moving forward. But I think this is a reasonable place to start.
Any board questions?
I would, I thank you for that. I would just add that because I think a lot of families may not be familiar with residency. And they think, for instance, if you produce a lease in the school district, then you are automatically have the, you know, have the ability to send your, your children to the public school at no charge. That it's not just having a lease, it's where you are residing and where you put your head down. So and where, you know, theoretically you plan on being long-term. So and I'm only raising this because I have heard of agents out there looking for a one-bedroom apartment so that they at least can be produced, so that kids can come to our school. And it's important that the community, to be the newer community, understand that that is not a legitimate pursuit.
We can share that information with the community. Thank you.
And then Jeff, what's the plan? So once we take those 100 new registers, registrants, are we gonna also like look into, I mean, you know, there's always like questions about people that just put P O boxes and things like that, you know, as as their address. I mean, are we going to further investigate them past those 100 or what's the plan?
Yes. So if it's reported that there is a question as to whether someone who is claiming to live in district separate from the 100 new registrants is actually residing in the district. The first step, and this was decided, I think, a year or two ago, with the building principal to contact that family and make inquiries and, and try to come up with evidence through the discussion that they actually reside in the district. If that discussion is not fruitful and we still have questions about whether or not that family resides in district, then the firm that is before you this evening will then be directed to conduct surveillance on that family. And then the surveillance will then dictate the next step. Obviously, if they reside in district, it's done. And if they're not, then there are letters that need to be sent out. And if they're not, then there are letters that need to be sent out advising them of the fact that they are not permitted to attend school in the district because they don't reside within the district.
And Jeff, just to clarify, that assignment from the school to the investigator comes from the administration?
It does, and we have to be very careful. That's why I reiterated that the first step is the principal talking to the family, because in instances like this across the country, sometimes these things become racially charged in that certain entities or races are targeted. And we want to make sure that we have systems in place where it's, we have checks and balances to guard against that.
Just to clarify one thing, so for the purpose of this consultant agreement, this is not just for the new registrants. It's like an agreement we're going to have for a year that it could apply to the, like, existing students or whatever. Okay, got it.
Correct.
Great. Any other board questions?
No.
Victoria?
That's unanimous. Thank you.
Is there a motion for item 9.4?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We need a second.
A second.
Thank you. Self-explanatory on this. Any board comment? Nope. Okay, Victoria?
That's unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion for item 9.5 to create the position of middle-high school principal in the secondary principal tenure area?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I think it's important on this one, we'll have Jeff's input and board input, and then we'll vote. Jeff, would you like to start?
Sure. So the, this is a situation where, when I became principal and actually preceding me, and I became principal around the year 1999, 2000, there was one principal for grades six through 12. And what happened, and even going back to the way that my appointment read, it was not as clean as it should have been. So language was such that it really needed to be restructured in a way that it made sense legally as it relates to education law. The second part of the equation is that, two years ago, Ms. Carriero was made the middle school principal. And there is, so when I became the superintendent, there were discussions about the organizational structure that would best serve the district and its students moving forward. And there were discussions about whether or not to hire a middle school principal to replace, excuse me, a high school principal to replace me and keep Ms. Carriero or the middle school principal position intact. And my comment, having worked in the district for a number of years, was that having two principals, a middle school principal and a high school principal, when roughly 80% of the staff work in both buildings, is really not a sustainable organizational model because you don't necessarily have one leader when a teacher is working for two different principals. So my recommendation to the board was that they go back to a middle school, high school principal. And, you know, they, it was up to the board to choose the candidate that they wanted to fill that position, but organizationally, I thought what made the most sense was a middle school, high school principal and a middle school assistant principal, high school assistant principal. So in order to make that happen, what you'll see on the board agenda tonight are a series of steps that basically allow that to happen. You have to have the middle school principal position eliminated. You have to have Ms. Carriero resign from that. And then you have to create the middle school, high school principal position in a secondary tenure area. And then, lastly, you have to make the appointment of the person to that position. And all of these steps were under the guidance of our attorneys, looking at the tenure laws and what would be prudent steps for our district to make sure we're in good shape as it relates to following those laws moving forward.
Thank you, Jeff. I think it's important for the public to know that as a board, we thought this was a return to a more efficient, smart for taxpayers, and efficiency in the district, as Jeff has outlined. Are there other board comments or questions with respect to this before we open the vote?
Jeff, I think it might be helpful for you to address. I was on the board when the middle school principal job was created, and a part of that presentation was an explanation that in order to have a more clearly defined and supported middle school with a more delineated identity and focus, that we were creating this additional administrative position. So I think it would be helpful for you to speak to your level of confidence if that can happen under this new structure.
So, Chris, just so I know, I understood your comment correctly. Did you say when the board created the middle school principal position or the middle school assistant principal position?
When we went from having one middle-high school principal to adding a principal position in the middle school and separating that, that was one of the major reasons in a public presentation from the superintendent at the time was to respond to the interest of the district and the community in parents of having a more delineated, independent middle school that had more focus, that had a stronger identity. So we're now kind of going back to the old structure, which I support, but I think it's helpful just to be able to speak to that in case anyone might have that concern.
Yeah, I think that you can continue to address the middle school in an effective way as long as you have an administrator and an assistant principal, a dean of students, whatever that is, focused exclusively on grade six. So when Ms. Beckhamis was the middle school assistant principal, she basically took a leadership role and tended to everything with adolescents in those grade levels. And when Ms. Carriero was hired as the middle school assistant principal, she also did, there was a decision made two years ago to make her the middle school principal, and I think it added, it added some benefits to the equation, but it's my considered judgment that we can continue to serve those students at the level we did in the past as long as we have an administrator, whether it's an assistant principal or a principal specifically assigned to that level.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other board questions?
I just wanted to say thanks to Jeff for, you know, doing both roles as superintendent and principal over the last few months. You know, we, as we said at the beginning, when you were hired as superintendent, you know, by doing both, it was saving the district some money for the time being, and you were able to do both, you know, so well. But now with students actually coming into the building, it's going to be harder to do that. So, you know, thank you for starting that in that role. And I'm not going to say congratulations yet to Brittany, but we look forward to congratulating you hopefully in a few minutes.
I second what Jordana just said.
Yeah. Victoria, please open the voting on 9.5.
That's unanimous. Thank you.
Great. Is there a motion on 9.6 to accept the Brittany Carriero's middle school principal letter of resignation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any board discussion? Victoria?
That's unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion on 9.7 to abolish the position of middle school principal?
So moved.
Second.
Second?
Yorgos second.
Yeah, I did second.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Oh, thank you. Victoria?
That's unanimous. Thank you.
Is there a motion on item 9.8 to appoint Brittany Carriero as middle-high school principal in the secondary principal tenure area?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any board discussion or comment? Victoria?
That's unanimous. Thank you.
Yay!
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Wonderful.
Is there a motion on 9.9 to create the position Dean of Students?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Chris. Jeff, if you could give us a brief overview, and then we could have any board comments?
Sure. So as per my comments a few minutes ago, it's my opinion that we need to have a person, an administrator, focused specifically on the middle school. And so with Ms. Carriero becoming the middle school, high school principal and no longer serving exclusively as the middle school principal, the organizational plan has us, us being the district, hiring a middle school assistant principal sometime in the future. Recognizing that this shift, this shift is happening right before the start of school, I recommended it, and the board agreed with coming up with a one-year appointment so that the district can do a thorough search, access a diverse applicant pool, and come up with a recommendation for a candidate to start July 1, 2021. So knowing that that's the big-picture plan, we had to fill the role this year to serve our students and families in grades six through eight. And the options really are to go within the faculty and to identify a person who we believe, we being the administrators, would fill that role in a quality way. And not many teachers have the administrative certification, and the candidate that we identified to serve in that role has teacher certification but not administrator certification, which is required to serve as an assistant principal, even if you only can do, even if the plan is only to do so for a year. So the question posed to our attorney was, if we have a teacher that we would like to place on special assignment to focus exclusively on the middle school, is there a way to do that where that individual possesses a teaching license and not an administrator license? And the answer to that is yes. And the title that our attorneys recommended is Dean of Students. And basically, a dean of students can perform essentially all of the duties associated with an assistant principal, things like discipline and things like looking out for students' success in the classroom, coordinating academic intervention services, communicating with families, all those types of things. The one thing that they can't do is teacher observations or formal teacher observations because they remain a member of the teaching unit. So again, the dean of students position, creating it, allows us to fill a need for one year with the big-picture plan being to conduct a thorough search with the goal being to appoint someone in the spring to start July 1, 2021.
And I believe the last dean of students was yourself.
That is correct. I was hired.
I was on the board.
A lifetime ago.
I was thinking the same thing.
I wasn't going to say that, but we're just for good history there. So with that, any board comment before we open the voting?
Just two things. One, so this is a, the position that we're creating is a dean of students for the middle school, correct?
Correct.
I just want to clarify that because it's not in the title, and so people may misinterpret that. And then.
I don't mean to cut you off, Chris. I, we had originally titled it Middle School Dean of Students, but upon the recommendation of council, changed it to Dean of Students. So I think it's just a housekeeping issue that our attorneys recommended person will be focused exclusively on the middle school.
Thank you. And then my other request is that, I think with the resolution, it would be helpful, and I'm not suggesting it be done tonight, but to attach the job description, since it's new in the district. The job description we received was somewhat dated, so maybe if I can get like, you know, just simply updated and attach the resolution so people are clear what the position is.
Sure, I can forward that to the board for your review.
Thanks so much.
Any other board comment? Victoria?
That's unanimous. Thank you.
Is there a motion on item 9.10, which appoints Laura Westhoff as Dean of Students?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any board discussion?
I'm sorry, who motioned?
Sandy.
Sandy and then Jordana. Got it. Thank you.
Any board discussion?
Thank you for stepping up to Ms. Westhoff for this year. We appreciate it.
I agree with Jordana. Thank you.
Great. And Jeff, you explained before about Ms. Westhoff, so I won't make it repeated for this item. So if there's no other board comments or questions, Victoria, please open the voting.
That's unanimous. Thank you.
Wonderful. Congratulations, Ms. Westhoff. We look forward to working with you this year. Is there a motion for item 9.11, Accept Cara Romeo Pre-Kindergarten Teaching Assistant Leave of Absence?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any board discussion? Victoria?
Thank you.
Is there a motion on item 9.12, Appoint Cara Romeo as pre-kindergarten teacher serving as a 1.0 full-time equivalent?
So moved.
Is there a second? Great. Any board discussion? Victoria?
Congratulations.
Thank you. Very well said, Chris.
That's unanimous. Thank you.
Item 9.13 is to approve Caitlin Bailey Teaching Assistant Leave of Absence. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Victoria?
Thank you.
And I don't know if there's some muting from, I hear some back. I don't know if that's from us. Item 9.4, I'm sorry, we just did nine, yeah, I'm sorry, 9.14 is to appoint Caitlin Bailey as elementary classroom teacher, one-year appointment. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any board discussion? Okay, Victoria? And Jeff, just generally, as we're doing this, these are to fill staffing needs based on the reduced classroom sizes and some other previous resignations or people that were hired and then couldn't take the appointment, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Just waiting for Yorgos. Thank you. That's unanimous.
Wonderful. Congratulations, Ms. Bailey and Ms. Romeo. Sorry. 9.15, Appoint Chelsea Cummings as elementary classroom teacher, one-year appointment. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Great. Any comments? Victoria? Victoria?
That's unanimous. Thank you.
Item 9.16, appoint Diana Koof as mathematics seven through 12 teacher, one-year appointment. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any board discussion?
Just thank you for Diana for stepping up and being willing to serve the district during this year. It's, you know, assuming we were able to approve this appointment this week. It's just wonderful that we can have someone filling this role that is so incredibly experienced and as being a math teacher.
Great. Victoria?
That is four yes and three opposed. I have Sandy Cruel, Chris Tice, and Yorgos opposed.
Okay.
Motion carried.
Item 9.17, appoint Dawn Stumpo as elementary classroom teacher, one-year agreement. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any board discussion? Victoria?
That is unanimous. Thank you.
Congratulations. Item 9.18, appoint Andrew Winkler as special education teacher, one-year appointment. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Victoria?
Oh, sorry.
That's unanimous. Thank you.
Item, congratulations. Item 9.19, appoint Emma McMahon as substitute teacher. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Great. Thank you both. Is there any board discussion?
I was just going to add that it's, we're beginning to see recent alumni coming back to serve the district and it's lovely to see because they have a, you know, familiarity with the district and the community and for them to come back is great.
Absolutely. Victoria?
That's unanimous. Thank you.
Item 9.20, to appoint Anthony Malia as mentor program coordinator.
So moved.
Second.
Great. Any board discussion?
Could the superintendent just give a one minute on what mentor program coordinator is?
Sure. So one of the requirements, as per New York State, is that school districts have a mentoring program for teachers that are new to the profession. And in Sag Harbor, if you're a new teacher, you're assigned a mentor. And that mentor is charged with helping you move your adjustment process to becoming a new teacher. And the mentor coordinator is the person who oversees all of the mentee-mentor relationships throughout the district. So in the past, that role was filled by Debbie Price and then Nina Landy. Nina Landy stepped away from it recently when she retired. And so Mr. Malia, I believe, is a good fit for this role. And I think his skill set is congruent with what.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Victoria?
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, is there, under items not scheduled, that came on later, item 10.1, appoint Hillary Rutch as elementary classroom teacher, one-year appointment?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any board discussion?
I'm just, some of these came on very late today, so I haven't been able to review them. But I just opened the first one. It looks like there's not a packet. There's just the agreement.
I'm not aware of that. I thought that all of the packets, I was under the impression that all of the packets were submitted along with the agreements.
It's under the.
Oh, I see. Here it is. I'm sorry. Okay, I'm just looking through. I hate to vote on stuff I haven't actually looked at yet, so.
Understood. And if you need to abstain, I understand because of the timing.
Yeah, you know, I don't want to hold anything up, so I'm just going to abstain. It's nothing to do with the candidates. I just haven't had, you know, this came in, I think most of them came in very late today, so I didn't know they were on.
You are.
Go ahead.
They have come in late and I apologize, but as per my previous comments, the scrambling, but I do apologize for that.
Totally understandable. We need to get good people in the seats.
Victoria?
That's six I and Chris Tice abstained.
Congratulations. Item 10.2, appoint Alicia Kennedy as English as a new language teacher, one-year appointment. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any board discussion? Victoria?
That is six yes and Chris Tice abstained.
Congratulations. Item 10.3, appoint Jaclyn Anderson as physical education teacher, one-year appointment?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any board discussion? Victoria?
That is six yes and Chris Tice abstained.
Item 10.4, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any board discussion? Okay, Victoria?
That is six yes and Chris Tice abstained.
Item 10.5, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second.
I'll second.
Oh, thank you. Victoria?
All right.
That is six yes and Chris Tice abstained.
Item 10.6, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Victoria?
That is six yes and Chris Tice abstained. Thank you.
Is there a motion on 10.7?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any board discussion? Hey, Victoria?
That is six yes and Chris Tice abstained. Thank you.
Moving on to unfinished business, item 11.1. Mr. Kriegsman, would you like to give an overview to the board and the public as to what this?
Sure. And so this has just been kind of a little pet project of mine, as most people probably know. On Ferry Road in North Haven, there is a bicycle path on both sides that a lot of folks use to bike and walk, but it's not really safe and a lot of people are not comfortable having their kids walk or bike on it, just given the traffic and the speed of the cars. And so you may recall, last year I got the will of the board to have conversations with some local officials in the hope of trying to get the state, which owns the road, to install some sort of barrier or sidewalk or something to make it safer for kids and for anyone else to walk and bike along. Everybody's been very supportive. I spoke to Jeff Sander, the mayor of North Haven, and Kathleen Mulcahy, mayor of Sag Harbor, and Assemblyman Fred Thiel in particular, has been very supportive. And he secured funds and got approval from the Department of Transportation to have that entire stretch of road, I think from the Shelter Island Ferry to East Hampton repaved. The road is also in general in pretty bad shape. And in connection with that, and I think this is attached to our board materials, Assemblyman Thiel sent a letter to the Department of Transportation, just asking them, as part of the repaving and redesign, to investigate the feasibility of putting in a walking path like this. And I think it would be great if we could get a letter from the board just supporting Assemblyman Thiel's request, because in addition to being a great thing for the community, it could be a great thing for the school district if parents who live in North Haven could have their kids walk or bike to school. It's my understanding that in addition to Assemblyman Thiel's letter, Mayor Sander and Mulcahy are going to be sending letters of support. So I asked to have this put on the agenda in the hope that we could get a letter either from Brian or Jeff asking the, just supporting Assemblyman Thiel's letter and asking them, as they look into repaving and redesigning this road, looking at the feasibility of some sort of safer walking biking path.
I mean, I know we've talked about it for a little while. I think it's a great idea, more installation of sidewalks if possible, so I would support that in a letter being written to accompany Assemblyman Thiel's.
I agree.
Board members choose to weigh in on that.
I agree.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a great project. I think it's definitely something that's a long time coming and anything we can do to help get it up and running is, you know, let's do it.
Chris?
I had unmuted. Absolutely. I mean, I don't think that the school district should focus resources on it because it's not a school-related project. It's a community-related project, but I do think that we should support it. Absolutely.
Yorgos?
Yeah, I agree. I think that's a great one. I was just wondering, since we're going to write that letter, if we can extend it also along Long Beach to connect more to Noack, so it's not just like for North Haven.
Agreed.
I think that's a good idea. My only, I think though, that the letter that goes, the road that goes along Long Beach is not a New York State road. I think that 114 is a state road and I think that the road along Long Beach is a county road.
I mean, we can look into it and if that's an option, we'd like to include it too. Otherwise, you know, I understand.
Yeah, no, I think that's great. In fact, my hope is that if we can get this done, it would just be a first step and maybe a second step would be a loop all the way around where you could go along Long Beach and then back around Brick Hill and Noack into the village from the other side and could provide safer walking and biking access at that point as well. That would be great.
Some of Noack has sidewalks and some of it, Noack Road does and some of it doesn't, closer towards Rock Hill. So that would be great.
We have the will of the board to write that letter, Alex, so if you could just provide this, you know, maybe some details as to the what's in the wares, that I think we would send a letter from the board.
That's great. Thanks, everyone.
I would just ask that the board see the letter, have an opportunity to review it and comment before it's sent.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you for your effort, Alex.
Thanks.
All right, great. That brings us to item 12.1, our second public input. Is there anybody here from the public that would like to comment? They can comment by writing something in the chat room or raising their hand and we will unmute them. I do think it's a good time to congratulate all of our new appointments tonight, new position teachers, both one-year, Ms. Westoff, Ms. Carrier, everybody that has stepped up to work to make this the best year possible under the circumstances. So I would thank you all for that.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to weigh in? On once, twice?
Brian, before we break then, I just wanted to mention, it's on the school website, but from eight to nine tomorrow morning is conversation with administrators and that's with the administrators of the middle and high school. And all parents are invited, it's a Zoom call, are invited to participate. And the feedback from parents is it's a very worthwhile, meaningful conversation. So this month it happens to be early in the morning when most folks are not at work yet.
Great. Thank you for that, Chris. That's important, I think, to get out there and all of our, through all of our mediums. Okay, so with that, is there a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing litigation and contract matters?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Victoria, open the voting, please.
Oh.
And with that, there is a link in everyone's email to participate.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
And Brian, just for clarity, there's no anticipation that we're going to come out of exec to do any official business and voting, correct?
There will be no business at exec. The meeting will end.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Good day, everybody.
Everybody, in a few minutes, there should be a link from Jordana in every board member's and Jeff's inbox.
Thank you.
Great.